Good evening, everybody. Just a few reminders before we get started this evening. The opening slide is up on the screen. Thank you for joining us tonight. And please take a moment to read through our engagement requirements below. We're asking folks to make sure that they are muted, that they've turned off their video so that the sound quality and visual quality is the best for all the participants. Set your video settings to the hide non-video participants. Use gallery view if you can. And please ask questions via the chat. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cara Armando. I'm the Executive Director of Heart of Ellsworth. I welcome you to our annual nonpartisan production event, Meet the Candidates. This event is sponsored by the Ellsworth American and Gibson Financial Solutions. We have partnered with the Ellsworth American to decide a, to design a format to feature each of the candidates running for a seat on the Ellsworth City Council. Events like this raise awareness of local issues and connect community members to participate in our local democracy. To stay connected to local issues, please consider subscribing to the Ellsworth American and the MDI Islander newspaper. Also this evening, we like to sort of just outline disclaimer statement. The opinions expressed during this event are those of the candidates. They do not reflect the opinions or views of the Ellsworth American or Heart of Ellsworth. This evening, the Ellsworth City Council candidates, I will read them from left to right. We have the incumbent Dale Hamilton, Jean Lyons, Bronson Plattner, and Edmund James Michael Springer. At the bottom of the screen, you will see each of the four email addresses for each of the candidates who are running for the Ellsworth City Council. Good evening, folks. At this point in time, I want to introduce our moderator Cindy Wood from the Ellsworth American.
Thanks, Cara. Thank you to the Heart of Ellsworth for organizing this wonderful event again this year. I'm going to lay out the rules for this evening. Each of the four candidates will have two minutes to make an introductory statement. And then we'll roll into the three moderator questions. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer those. Candidates will get a time warning when the two-minute mark is up. And we reserve the right to remove somebody if they go too far over their time. I will alternate the order of questions so that everybody gets a chance to go first. And after we get through the moderator questions, we will turn to questions from the audience. And we will get through as many of those as we can as time allows. So let's get started with introductions in alphabetical order. Let's start with the incumbent Dale Hamilton.
Good evening. Thank you. So first, I want to thank the sponsors for putting on this event. I think it's a great opportunity for the candidates to be able to take questions from the public. And obviously, we're doing it a little bit different this year. I just jump in in terms of talking about why I'm running for a second term. When I ran for the first term, I really had a goal of, one thing that I thought was really important was to improve the communication between the council and the public. I felt like there was an opportunity for there to be more dialogue, for it to be more comfortable for the community to weigh in on issues. And that's something that I think that I've accomplished. Worked really hard to make sure that there's an open environment, that there are conversations that take place. And most importantly, to make sure that there's an explanation about decisions that are being made. Certainly, from my perspective, whenever I'm weighing in on and voting, I try to explain how I arrived at that. The other thing is that I believe that we're in certainly some unprecedented times as we move through the impact of COVID, which I'm sure we'll get into a little bit later on. That's going to take a different, it's going to have a different impact on the community. And I believe that the community needs strong leadership. It's a skill that I believe that I have. And I think that leadership is going to be necessary as we, as we move forward. I also believe that the work ethic that I have in terms of my approach of being on the council is important. When, you know, the council isn't just showing up to one meeting every, every month, a third Monday, participating for a few hours, casting votes, and then going away. Really involves a lot of work behind the scenes in terms of one, first and foremost, is being available to the community. And that's one of the things that I've really focused on is participating in many groups, committees, making myself available, responding to the needs of the community, and bringing those issues back. So that's something that I really want to continue going forward. So I will.
All right. Jean Lyons? Are you still on, Jean? You have to come back. Bronson, can you give us your introductory statement?
Thank you, Cindy. I'm Bronson Plattner. I've lived and worked in Ellsworth for over 40 years. Originally, I came here as Assistant DA in the prosecutor's office. Then for 30 years, I ran my own law office. I am now retired and want to give back to the community. I have thoroughly enjoyed living in Ellsworth. I think it's a great community, except for the summer traffic in recent years. There are the good things about Ellsworth. We have good restaurants, good shopping. Shut up. I am sorry, I can't figure that out. We have good restaurants, we have good shopping, we have the Grand, we have the library. But there still be, can be things that can be improved here. Excuse me. I'm muting myself.
Perils of modern-day technology. All right. Edmund, Mike Springer, will you give your introductory statement?
Yes, I can't even figure out how to hang up the phone.
Good evening. Thank you, Cindy. My name is Michael Springer. I am very fortunate to have been born and raised here in Ellsworth, Maine, and have lived here my entire life. I have made it a point throughout my life to try to give back to our community. I spent 18 years as a volunteer firefighter on the Ellsworth Fire Department. I've been a member of the local Masonic Lodge, Ligonia Lodge, since 1993. I'm a proud member of the Anna Shriners and have helped raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for Shriners Hospitals for children. In the past 10 years, I've been fortunate enough to have given my time to the youth of our community, to the Boy Scouts of America. I have both of my children are actively involved in scouts. And my son actually became an Eagle Scout just this past year, which was quite an accomplishment. And I'm proud to say he's beginning to give back to this community through his Eagle Scout project. And I would really appreciate the opportunity to give back to the city again by being your next Ellsworth City Councilor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. I don't think we've managed to get Jean Lyons back on, but we might give him a chance later if he can get back on. So let's move on to our first question. What are the greatest challenges facing Ellsworth, and how would you address them? Bronson, would you like to take that one on first?
Yes, I think the greatest challenge facing Ellsworth is providing, maintaining, and improving services without unduly burdening the property tax rate. And I think the way we can do this is being active, having a council that actively pursues grants in cooperation with nonprofits and businesses in Ellsworth. I'd point out that the last time the city applied for a community block development grant was 2016. I also think that we need to look for more tax-paying development. The city has given out TIFs, which are helpful, but in the long run may not be if the school financing laws are changed or rules are changed by the state. And we have gotten in Jackson Lab, which is a great thing, except they do not pay taxes. I think that we need more initiative and imagination in exploring alternatives to the property tax and going for such grants. And I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mike, what are the greatest challenges facing Ellsworth, and how would you address them?
I see two immediate, important issues that Ellsworth needs to address. And the first is the education of our youth and how it is currently being delivered. The current COVID-19 pandemic, I believe, has wreaked incredible havoc on the effectiveness of educating our youth. I have two high school students myself. And I believe that with the school board, Superintendent Higgins, the city manager, and the city council, we could all work together to resolve some of the churn or heartburn so that we can deliver a truly outstanding educational product to our youth. Because I honestly feel that the youth just are not getting the level of education they need to succeed, especially going off to college. The other area of the city that I see that needs attention would be our city streets and roads. High Street, Main Street, Water Street are rapidly deteriorating. And since Ellsworth has become an urban compact from the census of 2010, it falls on the city to maintain those streets. And it puts a very hard burden on our financial resources. However, the state would share some of the cost if we applied for grants. And I believe that along with what Bronson said, I believe there's money to be had there. Ellsworth is a fantastic support for every ounce of traffic that goes to Acadia National Park, passes through the crossroads of Down East Maine, which is Ellsworth. And I believe with every gallon of gasoline that's sold, there has to be some money there that we can maintain our streets to a, to a better standard than we currently do.
Time.
Thank you. Dale, greatest challenges facing Ellsworth, and how would you address them?
Sure, thank you. So I think obviously, we're going to get into COVID, I'm sure, at some point. That those, that certainly presents some challenges. But I want to address it more in a broader context because I don't think there's any one or two items that rise to the level of challenges. There really is a convergence of many different issues that we have to be paying attention to. And I kind of lump them into the idea of that we need to have stability in the city and sustainability. What we need to be focused on is what is the long-term goal and moving incrementally to, to accomplish that. So I think first and foremost, some of the things that, that we've paid attention to and that I've been really focused on is keeping the tax rate low. Over the three years that I've been on the council, and this isn't just my work, but we've only had a slight increase in the tax rate, less than a point, it's about 0.53 increase over those three years. But at the same time, we, I pushed and helped develop what is a capital planning committee. And that's focused on looking at all of our capital expenditures to make sure that get away from these emergency expenses, get away from not understanding how they all come together, bring in citizens to that committee so that what we're doing now is looking out five years, looking at the needs and prioritizing. I agree, roads need to be addressed. However, in the context of the budget, a mile of roads is about a million dollars to really do it. So with the amount of infrastructure that we have, we do have to pay attention to that, and, and we have to plan. So I think our greatest challenge is, is in the, in the role of planning. I also believe that we have to be realistic in looking forward in terms of we, we do need to bring in new businesses and new opportunities. But there's also a realistic perspective about that is that that doesn't happen overnight. That falls into the idea of how effective are we at planning? And I think that's one of the things as we move forward as a city with a new city manager.
Time.
One of the primary goals.
Thank you, Dale. And I'm told that our fourth candidate, Jean Lyons, is en route to a better internet connection. So hopefully, he can catch up with us later. Moving on to our second question. In the wake of COVID-19, there's been much discussion about cutting costs and making hard decisions. If you were to make costs specifically, what, if you were to make cuts specifically, what costs would you cut? Or what other hard decisions would you make? And Bronson?
I can't tell you specifically what cuts I would make. I think in order to do that, I would have to first look at all the budget submissions by each department and listen to the rationale for those submissions before I could decide what to cut and what not to cut. We may very well need to cut, but I'm not in any position now to say what specifically could be cut.
Thank you. Dale, same question?
I think the, the issue with COVID is far more complex than just arriving at a place where the city might need to cut. And I'm not suggesting that that isn't going to have to happen. It may very well need to. But to jump at this point to just that as the only issue facing the city with, related to COVID, is really looking at it in a very, in a limited fashion. And what I mean by that is that I think that what we have to do and what I've been doing since the beginning of COVID is working with businesses, working with the chamber, participating and understanding what the needs are. The decisions that have been made by the state in terms of how we will respond is impacting on our community. It is impacting on our businesses. And as much as we need to focus on the city, we also need to advocate for good decisions and good planning. As being in the mental health profession, I can tell you that there are other aspects of COVID that are significant issues that we need to be mindful of. And some of the decisions that we're making that isolate people, that impact their economic health and welfare, is taking a toll on people's mental health. And we're seeing serious issues developing. This is coming from the federal CDC, who have done studies on this. But we have to be mindful that COVID is taking a bigger impact on the city as a whole, not just economically. That will be there, and there will be challenges. To identify one or two areas to cut would be absolutely inappropriate. It's about understanding what the needs are and making decisions at the time that they need to be made based on the facts and the data. So I'm, I'm prepared to, to make those decisions and to make those cuts if necessary. But we have to recognize that, that COVID is a bigger threat to the city in many different ways, not just economically. And we have a responsibility to really push. Hopefully, the legislature will be back in session, and we can start getting a voice in that direction where we haven't really had one to this point. So I think it's a more holistic approach that we need to take and continue to take and, and something that I've been involved in and will continue to be involved in until we move through the issue.
Thank you. Mike, same question?
Thank you. I believe that the city should prepare for the worst financial forecast possible. Local news is beginning to pick up the budget shortfalls of the state. I believe that's going to translate into how much state aid or grants, if you will, that Ellsworth will have available to them. I believe that if each department took a fiscally conservative approach with a greater eye towards efficiency, that perhaps we would not need to cut any positions if we just ran the departments more effectively and maybe more as a team. I believe that, just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
You're on, Mike. Mute, Mike.
I'm back. Sorry. Private industry has certainly gotten leaner in the way they've done business. I've been a technician with a phone company for 23 years. And in 1997, there were 20 technicians that reported to the garage here in Ellsworth. Today's, they're 13, and we're busier than we ever have been. We've just learned to work more efficiently. And I think the city and municipal governments can, can take a lesson from private industry. We can do a better job, improve the level of our services, and quite possibly even save some money at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our third question of the night. In addition, in addition to electing two counselors, Ellsworth is also on the hunt for a new city manager. What type of leadership does the city need going forward? Mike, do you want to go first on that one?
Absolutely. Thank you. I believe that our city manager ideally will be engaged on every level of the, of the city, not only with department heads, but with the frontline employees that, that work for us, that provide services to have a better understanding, to build and implement a team concept where we may be able to find some efficiencies that we can run the city better, more effectively at a lower cost. Ideally, I would really like to have the city manager either come live in Ellsworth or get hired from the city of Ellsworth, or at least relocate to the city of Ellsworth as a condition of their employment. Because I feel that if they live in our community, they're going to be much more invested in the way things are run at City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks. Dale, same question?
Thank you. So I think that, you know, we're going to be looking for somebody who has a wide range of qualities. One is, I think being a very effective communicator is going to be critical. Engaging the community is more than just the task of the, the council. And I think the city manager really has a role in connecting the community from the businesses to the residents to bring that together. One of the strengths of our community is that we are diverse. And we need to be able to pay attention to the, the needs of all different sectors of our community. And that starts with the city manager really gaining a really good understanding about that. So that ability to communicate will be, will be critical. I also think that the person needs to come with a strong background of, of understanding economic drivers. To just come into a city to try to put a plan together and move things forward, a council made up of seven individuals can certainly help. But it really comes down to somebody that really understands those conditions of what it takes to bring in grants, what it takes to bring in new businesses. How do you create a culture that is supportive of that balance between having economic growth while maintaining a city that really provides for quality of life? And, and really understanding that and developing that. Somebody that understands planning and has a demonstrated history of being able to plan, being able to look out five years and, and lead a council, lead the community to, to that end point, and being able to step back and, and have the ability to focus where attention needs to be. And then I think as important as anything is that leadership. Being able to, to have the history of leading, not just having positions, but really demonstrated that ability to lead people, lead processes. And so when, when we're looking at as a city, I hope that we, we take the time to really vet the candidates to see what they've done, not just what they're telling us, but what they've done.
Thanks, Dale. Bronson, what should the city be looking for in leadership going forward?
I think they need to look for somebody who has the energy and initiative to look for alternatives funding to the property tax, to go out, pursue grants, and to know, have the experience in getting grants. And who is not an empire builder, not somebody who wants to have as many assistants as possible, but somebody who wants to run the government as efficiently as possible. I also think that, as Mike said, that person should, I don't need, doesn't need to be a resident of Ellsworth to be hired, but should want to move to Ellsworth and become a member of the community. I think those are the category, the principal characteristics I would like to see in a city, new city manager.
Thank you. We're going to move into questions from the audience right now. If you'd like to submit some, you can use the chat feature on, here on Zoom, or you can comment on the Facebook Live post. And I've got some already, and several are related to funding for the library. This one is from Barbara Byer. COVID-19 has caused many of us to feel isolated. Would you support maintaining or increasing funding for organizations like the Public Library and the Grand that help to promote a sense of community? Right. Dale, would you like to answer that one first?
Sure. And I just want to let people know my camera's flickering on and off, so I apologize for that. So I would answer this way. One is, I think we have to be very careful in terms of the city stepping in. The Grand, for example, is a nonprofit entity. And I don't think you can just pick and choose which nonprofits you want to support. I think we have processes for that. I think we absolutely want to support it from a sense of where we can. The library is a whole different entity. It's part of the city. The city operates it and runs it. So I think absolutely the city, the, the library is a valuable resource to the community. And it's important that we continue to support the library. And as you can see, I've frozen, so I will just look like that for a minute. But, you know, with the library, in terms of some of the issues that we face, one of the, the balancing act is that I don't, it really is a regional library. It serves the greater area. And I think there is a, consistent with the trustees of the library. There's a need for those surrounding communities to support that. The Ellsworth taxpayers should not have to bear the 100% of the cost. And that's the movement that's, that we've taken and something that I pushed. And we now have a committee that's formed between the council and the trustees. And we're looking for community members to help us to really work on that issue and, and have those surrounding communities contribute to that. So from that perspective, absolutely, the city of Ellsworth should continue to be very supportive of the library. But we should also be very supportive of the taxpayers of Ellsworth to pay what, what is reasonable, but also to expect some support from outside of the, the community.
Thank you. Mike, same question?
Okay, thank you. I am absolutely in favor of maintaining the current level of funding for the Ellsworth Public Library. Public Library. Councilman Hamilton, I think, hit the nail right on the head with the financial support from the outlying communities. We're providing a service to those residents and that those other, those communities, quite frankly, I feel should help defray the cost of the library as it's their residents that are enjoying it. Obviously, we cannot make surrounding towns pay, so maybe we need to look at something along the lines of a non-supporting member, much like the Down East Family YMCA does, where if you come from a community that they, they elect not to support the library, maybe we just have to charge them a, a small fee to help defray the cost. I do believe, however, that much like the waterfront, the library brings people to Ellsworth and they have a tendency to support the local businesses in our community. They may come to the library to pick up a book and they may do some grocery shopping. They may give some business to one of our local restaurants. And I think there's, there's value to that too. So, and as for the Grand, I'm going to defer to Councilman Hamilton's experience in this and where they're a nonprofit, I'll just echo his sentiments. Maybe we cannot directly support the Grand, but the Grand is such a huge asset to, to downtown Ellsworth and Ellsworth itself that it needs the support and we should see what we can do to, to make sure they succeed and that they're still here, because it would be a, be a huge hole in the downtown area to lose, lose the Grand.
Thank you. Bronson, same question.
Yes. I strongly support providing adequate funding to the library. The library, as been pointed out, brings people into Ellsworth. And I have had several downtown business people tell me that a good portion of their businesses, these are restaurant owners, are people who bring their families to the library and then go out to lunch in Ellsworth. That library is a very, is an attraction to people coming into Ellsworth, spending at Ellsworth businesses. It's an also good attraction for people who wish to live in Ellsworth. I also support the library's attempts and I think the idea of a fee to members of other communities who do not contribute to Ellsworth, having a fee for them makes sense. We do not want to make it too high though, because we do not want to discourage those people from coming into Ellsworth. As far as the Grand goes, I also, it is not a city department as the library is. Ellsworth, the voters have never made it such. I think the city should support the Grand if it can help them get grants and everything wherever possible. I think we have to first look at supporting city departments though, before we talk about diverting taxpayer money to the Grand, because the taxpayers can contribute to the Grand directly themselves.
Thank you. We'll move into another question from the audience. We received several that are variations on the theme of what should the city council's role be in enforcing public safety measures related to COVID-19? This one is specifically from Nate Hanson. Understanding that school and business activities could be curtailed if COVID numbers increase in our area, what will you do as a city councillor to encourage recommended health measures such as mask wearing and social distancing? Bronson? Get it unmute.
Every time I unmute. Okay. Now I finally unmuted. I think as a city, city councillor, I would see what funding's available to encourage people to wear masks, to encourage people to social distance. And I don't know really what else we can do other than to get people to do, encourage people to be safe.
Thank you. Dale?
So I, this is an area that, that we have been involved in as a city. We, we had, there was a grant, initially a grant that we had to put together in a matter of a couple of days, which we did to provide support. I think that what the city can do is provide the leadership to help support the community in terms of having access to masks, hand sanitizer. And we've helped a lot of businesses through the grant process and to support in those roles, which, which helps to keep people safe. But I also think that it's important that you cannot simply put police out on the streets and force people to comply with requirements of masking. I don't think it's the role of the city to go around and, and monitor businesses to make sure the patrons are, are doing what they, they need to do. I think you can help support those businesses, but I don't think you can approach it from that enforcement. I also think that, that very much that, again, as I said earlier, COVID is a, is something that is more dynamic than just what we hear day to day. We have to be mindful that we will see higher numbers. It is a virus. The virus will spread. And what we need to do is to educate and continue to support protecting those people that we know are most vulnerable to this virus. And, and I think that's our role is that education, support, but enforcement is not something that is going to be successful. And, and you can see it across the country. If you just push enforcement, you get a lot of resistance, you get a lot of misinformation. This has to be done through understanding and commitment. And if you look at what's happened in our community, our, our community has done a terrific job. People are paying attention to that and, and doing the very best they can. But even with those measures, wearing masks, food hygiene, social distancing, we should continue to do that, but that in and of itself will not be a guarantee that we won't see an increase. And to assume otherwise is really missing the, the understanding of the larger virus. So I think we should continue to play a, a supportive role, but not enforcement.
Thank you. Mike, what should the city council's role be in enforcing and promoting COVID guidelines?
I feel that the city of Ellsworth, but to echo again, Councilor Hamilton, the city should support local businesses with the availability of masks, sanitizers, some cleaning supplies, if, if that's possible through the grants. And I don't believe it, it should ever be the job of the Ellsworth Police Department to enforce mask usage or to investigate whether a business is complying with wearing a mask. I believe that's an infringement or a, a big over, overstep of their, of their boundaries. I think that the public is, has been doing a, a good job. It's getting better in terms of the mask usage, but the COVID numbers, they are going to go up. And as a matter of fact, I got a call from the Ellsworth School Department today where they have an individual that has tested positive and my son now needs to quarantine for 14 days, even though it's out of an abundance of caution. He was in study hall. They maintained six feet of social distancing and mask wearing, but out of an abundance of caution, he's going to quarantine for the next 14 days. And I think it is the education, it is the public's approach to everyone's health, that it's in our best interest to wear the mask. But it shouldn't be the part of the police department to enforce their usage.
Thanks. And I think Gene is joining to us. He's had some internet issues, but I hope they're resolved. Do you want a minute to settle in, Gene, or do you want to jump right in?
Well, I'm kind of scrunched up here, so, but, oh well.
We had to come to City Hall to get the internet.
All right. Coming to you from the City Hall parking lot, Gene Lyons. The current question is what should the city council's role be in promoting COVID-19 safety precautions such as social distancing and mask wearing?
City council's role?
Yes.
I guess I would have to say that with the state, the state makes all the rules, right? It's really hard for the city to get involved in it. If they left it to the individual towns, I guess you could go from there, but with the state making the rules, it's kind of hard for us to say anything.
Okay, thank you. Next question is from the audience is what is your vision for the city's waterfront? Let's start with Mike on this one. Mike, are you still with us?
I'm here. I'm here.
Did you hear the question?
I did. I did. The waterfront, this is one of the, I believe, one of the big success stories of the city of Ellsworth, and I'm not a boat owner. The rehabilitation of the waterfront and the increase of services to the boating community is one of the, I think, one of the best things the city has done. The usage from the community, citizens, the increased business that it has brought to, to our area is fantastic. I would love to see if the demand is there, to see if perhaps we couldn't add perhaps a few more slips to accommodate more watercraft, because it certainly seems to be a well-utilized area. Thank you.
Thank you. Gene, same question. What is your vision for the city's waterfront?
Well, over the past few years, I've, you know, they've changed a few tanks, which I thought personally was a little over the top on price. They put new sidewalks in, that's great, down to, so they come out on Water Street. That's a really good job. I like that. It looks pretty down there. It looks good, but at the same time, my opinion, the amount of money that gets spent there will never be regained back to the city. It'll just always be over budget. Keep it looking good, keep doing what they're doing now, but really can't add a bunch of extra stuff to the waterfront right now, especially what we got in the, you know, makings here with this COVID thing. We're not going to be overburdened with money in the next couple of years, I don't believe. That's it.
Thank you. Dale, what is your vision for the city's waterfront?
So a couple of things. You know, the, the, replacing the tanks were something that we had to do. That was a EPA issue, environmental protection. We had to replace the old ones. I think it has given us the ability to, for long-term growth. And when I talk about long-term growth, I'm not talking about next year, five years. I think this is something that the, the waterfront has the potential for some growth looking out 10 years. And I think it's part of what council should be doing is planning for the, the long-term future. And we were able to replace that without increasing the tax burden. So that's been a positive thing. And, and we, we've seen some of that already in terms of the number of boats that have, have been in, into the harbor. The other, the other thing that I think that is important is, is the steps that we've taken to create some more walking space there. Having spaces like that is an attraction for people to, to live in the city, to bring people to the city, to bring businesses to the city. So there's a, there's a, an investment that, where I agree that you, you may not get the return immediately from a straight line perspective on the cost of the tank. There are lots of other ways that a, a great looking, great functioning waterfront can bring in economic development and, and growth for the city, including potentially some opportunities for some new businesses on the waterfront. When we look at some of the aquaculture industry, having a working waterfront is certainly more possible now that, that we've taken the steps that we have. I've also been participating in a group to look at developing through, not necessarily through the city funding, but through private partnerships in terms of creating a walking path that goes all the way down to, to, to Main Street. That's a long-term project, but it starts, you know, one step at a time and looking at how do you make that possible? And I think that that's a, a realistic endeavor for us to continue to support. I don't believe that the city can, can fund it nor should fund it, but I think we can be a partner in bringing that together to create that opportunity that as people come in through the harbor, they're able, easy access, walking down to, to Main Street.
Thank you. Bronson, same question.
Yes. I think the city has done a very good job with the Marina and in developing that. My vision is, like Dale's, I would like to see a private partnership with private ownership to develop a walking path all the way down to the Marina and to develop what now is a storage yard for dump trucks into something that would have perhaps a restaurant, a cafe, small hotel, but something that would make the water hole downtown of Ellsworth more attractive. That I don't think the city can do, but it should encourage private, private ownership to maximize the return from that area and to make it more attractive.
Thank you. This is another one for the audience that I think is particularly pertinent, given some of the issues this evening. It's from Kristen Schlefer. Of all the issues our city faces, where do you prioritize the need for reliable high-speed internet infrastructure for all Ellsworth residents? Dale, do you want to start?
Sure, thank you. Well, I, I think it is, you know, when we look at just technology and, and COVID is, one of the things COVID has done from a positive perspective is helped us all to adapt to being able to utilize technology to be more efficient in businesses, to make more connections with people. High-speed internet broadband is, is critical and it's part of that, that ongoing development. Getting there and expanding it, you know, the city has done a, a piece of that and there's an element that, that where that exists, but there's a whole part of the city that is without and we do need to look at that expansion. That is something that is complicated in terms of what is the best approach to realizing it. If it were easy, it would be done throughout the state. So it's, it's not easy, but it's not impossible. There are communities in the state that have banded together and formed their own coalitions and, and have implemented it. So it's certainly something that we can do and something that we should do and need to do. And last year, when the schools went remote, I think that was probably one of the, the clearest indicators of the inept broadband situation that we have, where many students could not participate in remote education because they didn't have access to reliable internet. And so the balance of how do you bring that forward? How do you do it? I don't think the city can do it alone, nor do I think the city should do it alone. There's a cost to it. We need to figure out a way of partnering. And, and that goes back to what I said earlier about a city manager, having somebody coming in that can look at these kinds of issues and plan for it. A city council can help support and guide and direct, but you really need that on-the-ground work that's going to take place, develop those relationships, much like what took place with the solar project that we're now participating in. So I think it's a high priority and probably something that's, as we look forward in the next few years, that, that we need to develop a plan and have something in place to, to make it happen. And I'm sure Mike will have a much better insight in terms of, of what we can do being in that industry.
All right. Well, Dale set you up well. Mike, would you like to take that one next?
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely, thank you. Uh, I'll try not to drop the ball, as it were. It's true, I've worked in this industry for 23 years and I started out with the dial-up modem and have seen the technology advance to where now it's becoming rapidly evident that it's going to take a fiber-based network to give people the bandwidth that they need to work remotely, to attend school remotely, to do enjoy these Zoom meetings that we have. I do know that my, my employer Consolidated Communications has partnered with communities in Maine. They assessed the town of Brooklyn, I actually built that project. The town of Brooklyn established a standard that they wanted a minimum speed for every resident within the town of Brooklyn. And we were able to de- deploy that product at a very reasonable cost. It's a hybrid fiber to the node and the last, we call it the last mile is copper. Consolidated Communications just received an influx of almost a half billion dollars and they are committed to fibering up communities in their footprint. And I would love to think that Ellsworth could partner with Consolidated, with Spectrum. It doesn't matter, as long as we get that technology to the residents of the city of Ellsworth because in areas where there is a fiber network and the people that are moving into Maine from outside the state absolutely require the bandwidth to work remotely from home and communities that are finding that they have invested in a fiber network to the home are finding their property values going up. And it becomes a, a decision, a factor in the decision-making of where they, what town they, people want to buy that next new home. Town A has fiber, town B does not. Typically, the hot, the home, the home prices go up in towns that have that type of infrastructure.
Thanks.
Cindy, you should have had him go first, so I could have said what he said.
Next time. Uh Gene, same question. How do you prioritize expanding internet connectivity to all Ellsworth residents? There you go.
So as I sit here in the city hall parking lot, hugged up as close to the building as we can get, I would say that we have, we definitely need to be a priority. And with the, like Dale said, with the remote learning, there are kids that cannot get logged on from their homes. It's definitely a priority. As Mike said, with the, you know, land values, the home values, as people, they just sold 136 lots up in Waltham. You know, those people are, they're all out of status, they're all going to need high speeds, so we're hoping it goes right by our house so we can hook into theirs, you know? And maybe get a part of that. It's definitely a top priority, it's going to need to be with the way the schools are operating now. And I'm seeing in the future, there's probably going to be more than one way of going to school here, so we definitely need to have it, you know, so that everybody can get at least a minimum amount of internet.
Thank you. Bronson, same question. How do you prioritize expanding internet connectivity?
I think it's a very high priority to get everybody in Ellsworth high-speed internet. In today's world, not having high-speed internet is like having a bad road to your house. You just can't participate. And I agree with the previous speakers have said is, it will attract, having high-speed internet attracts people and businesses to a community. And it is a factor in people's decision where they want to live. I think it's an extremely high priority and we need to partner with businesses to get that done.
Thank you. Next question is one from the audience, it's from Molly Friedland. What is your opinion of anti-racism leadership? Do you consider yourself to be actively anti-racist and what does that mean for you? Gene, do you want to start?
I'm anti-racist, I have no problem with people of color or anything, I guess I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Bronson, same question?
Well, I certainly do not consider myself a racist. I don't know what she means by being active anti-racist. I think we need to be welcoming to people of all ethnic groups and all faiths. And I would hope we will continue to be so.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I consider myself to be anti-racist as well. In fact, you, I would say that I'm colorblind. I choose to believe that it's an individual's actions and the way that they conduct themselves matters more than any skin color, race, creed, it doesn't matter. It's whether, it comes down to whether or not you're a good person.
Thank you. Dale, same question?
Obviously, I have to start with saying, yes, absolutely anti-racist, but I, I want to expand on that a little bit in terms of one, one of the dynamics that I think in our culture that we have right now is this, and it's, it's not new, is, is the stigmatization of, of individuals, the discrimination of individuals. Again, I mentioned earlier that I work in the mental health field. Individuals who experience serious mental illness have been stigmatized and have been discriminated against because of, of their illness. I don't think people should experience discrimination because of a, a, an illness. I don't think people should be discriminated against because of their, their race, their skin color. Those are all things that are totally irrelevant. And so when the question in terms of leadership, I, I really think that leadership is about first and foremost, how you conduct yourself and what you do, what you stand up for. And that's something that certainly in my 30-year career in the mental health is standing up for people who are put in those positions of being discriminated against. And certainly if there were situations that occur in our community that warranted it, I would certainly be standing up to, to, to lead that effort in terms of making sure that we have a community that is accepting and that we look at that. And I think you can look at my record on the council in terms of some of those issues. And that's what, so when it comes down to it, I think leadership is about how you first and foremost, conduct yourself and then how you work with others around these issues and whether you show up when, when there's a need to show up. And that would certainly be my approach.
Thank you. We have one, time for at least one more audience question. This one is from current city council member Michelle Kaplan. City equipment purchases are expensive as are maintenance costs. How versed are you in city equipment costs and maintenance schedules? Bronson?
I'm not at all versed in certain city maintenance costs or schedules. That is something I will have to learn on the job if I am elected.
Same question. Gene?
I'm fairly well versed in the cost of equipment. I run equipment constantly. I know the equipment that we use in our business, we can get a lot of years out of and still in good condition. And I see some of the equipment, maybe that Ellsworth owns that gets run down much faster. And we're a high, high-production company, you know? I would like to see the longevity of the equipment last longer because when you sell it at auctions, you just don't get the money back that you put into it. And I'd like, I would like to see, you know, the equipment treated better. You know, there's, you can clean it, paint it, and it lasts just as long as trading it in and getting new and, or auctioning it for a tenth of what it's worth. Vehicles like pickup trucks, you know, I'd like to see them, you know, if you need to take a pickup truck home, maybe you leave it at home and then use your personal vehicle from there to go do your shopping and stuff, instead of just the trucks are just running around constantly. I see them in other towns frequently. I'd like to see an input to that, maybe the new city manager could even get involved in that. That's all.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, Mike, same question?
Without a doubt, some of the biggest ticket items that the city can purchase would be the large equipment, whether it's a dump truck, a grader, a loader, a fire truck. And these i- items, I would hope are part of the city council's long-range forecast and that they're budgeted for each and every year so that when that piece of equipment eventually does outlive its useful service life, there's a tidy-down payment that can be made that would cover a large portion of that purchase price so that the city wouldn't have to float a very large bond to purchase equipment. As to the maintenance, Gene, I couldn't agree with you more. Private industry, the, the commercial vehicles that you see on the roads, the ones that have been around for years and years and years are maintained on a very strict regimented maintenance program. And a lot of those businesses employ their own mechanics to make sure it gets done. I remember back in 1989, the engineers, the Ellsworth Fire Department used to perform the oil changes on the fire trucks. And that has since stopped. I think that might be an area where, provided they're adequately trained, something like, something as simple as a fuel, an oil change and filter change performed in-house is going to end up saving the city money and lengthen the longevity of those big-ticket items. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Dale, same question?
Sure, so let me, let me just talk, I've mentioned this earlier, but I'll come back to it because it's, it's very pertinent to this particular issue. What, but the first year that I was on the council, one of, one of my experiences was that there were requests, it seemed like every month, a request for a new big piece of equipment, whether it was a truck or, you know, plow truck and, and I was just feeling kind of off-guard of, of how many of these requests are coming through. And that's when I advocated that we create this capital planning committee. And I did that because I wanted to get away from just individual departments putting forward their individual requests and putting together a capital plan that focused on all of the departments, all of the capital needs so that we could begin prioritizing. For, for me, the issue really comes down to accountability. And the request to purchase equipment is based on if you're accountable for it and you know that you're not going to be, your department will not get another truck for another eight years because it's not a high priority. There's a level of accountability to care for that differently than if the expectation is, well, when it, when it's time, I'll just put in a request and, and we'll try to push that through. So I, I think it begins with, with the process that we've, we've put into place, planning for capital items and being able to move those items around. But it gives, much like our own individual lives, if we're out to, to purchase a big-ticket item, we might, we know when that's paid off, then we have some capital to then move on to the next item. And if you do that, you can keep the tax rate stable and you can keep a replacement of vehicles that work for the needs of the city in an orderly way, in an economically prudent way, and in a way that we kind of get away from this, this constant questioning of whether or not we're, we're making the right decisions because we're doing better planning. So I, I will continue to support that approach, I will continue to support the capital planning committee. And as I said earlier, we bring in citizens and I hope that will expand a bit as we go forward to have that outside perspective coming in to help evaluate those needs as well.
Thank you. Um, we originally scheduled to wrap up at 7:30, but I'd like to stretch it a little bit further for another 10 minutes or so and get in, one more audience question and also give Gene an opportunity to make his introductory statement. Is that all right with you four? Okay. Next question is from Mary Blackstone. Apart from maintaining fiscal responsibility, what measures would you like to initiate while on council to assure the broad, long-term sustainability of our community? Mike, do you want to take that one first?
Well, I will certainly try to answer the question. I believe that the city will need to, and I think the city is taking steps in the right direction. They need to honestly, I think fiscally prepare for the worst. I believe, you know, tax revenue is going to be down, but we still have to run the city, we still have to provide the services. And it's how, how effectively the city will be run in the next two years is going to be my best guess on how healthy the city will emerge from the pandemic and be able to sustain growth going forward. It is, it's my hope that one of the things we can do is to find partners that would complement the investment that Jackson Lab made in our community. BioPharma is growing huge, the quality of life we have here. I believe that's a definite way forward, it's not going to happen overnight. However, BioPharma will not, they will bring in good jobs, fantastic support jobs, it will raise every ship in the harbor of Ellsworth if we can pull something like that off. And I, I hope that I've answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dale? How would you support long-term sustainability of the community?
Sure, so, and I know this isn't necessarily economic, but I did see a comment about tax rates. I just want to quickly say that tax rates have not been on the rise. In 19, it was 18.24, in 20, it was 18.81, and then last year it was 18.77. So our tax rate has been stable over the last three years. And I think that's an important part of any sustainability plan. If you don't have sustainable economic conditions, it makes it very difficult to then approach other types of activities for sustainability in other areas. And earlier talking about the waterfront and developing that in terms of turning that into more access for walking and recreation. I think we want to have those types of environments within the city. That can't be accomplished if people can't afford to, to live in the community. So we have to recognize that all of these issues overlap, that economic stability is critical and that some areas of investment, when we think about renewable energy, we took the step last night not to make or purchase solar power, but to contribute to solar power being introduced into the community. That, that helps, that helps to sustain from that renewable perspective. But we also have to be smart about it. We cannot just implement plans that look like they create a sustainable environmental conditions if they drive up costs to the point that people can't afford to be part of the community or those conditions negatively impact on the most vulnerable citizens or the most economically vulnerable citizens. So it really is a balancing act, and I think that there's been a very active group that Mary has certainly been a part of and has led. I think that the city should continue to, to listen, respond to and have conversations. This is about us moving forward as a community. We, we need to create that balance and that always starts with conversations and trying to find the, the middle ground to move things forward. So it, it begins with, I said at the very beginning of this, this forum, that we need stability and sustainability. So it begins with, I said at the very beginning of this forum, that we need stability and sustainability. That's in all aspects and that's really what's going to help our city now and in the future.
Thank you. Gene, what would you do as a counselor to ensure long-term stability of the community?
I think more now than ever. We probably really need to focus on putting the community's needs before the wants. Try to say, I just see this pandemic costing so much that it's going to be hard to get back on track after, I mean, these businesses downtown have been operating at half-capacity. So that means about half the revenue they would normally bring in, I would assume, and come tax time. I think it's going to be a lot harder for some of them to keep up with the taxes. So and then if we have to raise taxes at all, it's just going to make it that much more harder. So focus on keeping the structure the way it is currently, so the taxes don't go up like Dale said. They have not gone up drastically in the last few years at all. So that's a big plus. We can keep it that way. That would be a great, and then just the recovery from this whole thing. I mean, we need to get people back up to 100% so that the businesses can thrive. As far as, you know, the waterfront, people keep mentioning the waterfront. We need to keep in mind about the dams that drain the lakes right down to absolutely nothing. I mean, you can almost walk across Graham Lake right now. We need to do something about that. That's all.
Thank you. Bronson, same question on sustainability?
Yes. If we are to be sustainable in the future, I do think we need to continue to try to attract tax-paying development. We have to try to get high-speed internet for everyone. Both those things will help the tax base and keep the taxes down so that we can sustain growth. And that is what.
Thank you. Gene, would you like to give your introductory statement now? Let people know about yourself and your campaign?
All right. I'm Gene Lyons, 54 years old, lived in Ellsworth and surrounding area. I did live in Surrey for a while. But basically, all my life, I spent three years in the US Army infantry man. I've worked for O.J. Folsom Incorporated the past several years, but I've worked in the concrete field for the last 32 years, owning my own business for eight of those years. I have four children, three who are adults and one who is two and a half years old. So and a wife. I'm married and I want to take part in looking, you know, looking out for the community. And instead of being a part of the problem, I'd like to be a part of the, you know, resolutions.
Thank you. I want to thank the audience for joining us this evening. I'm sorry we couldn't get to all of your questions, but we had a slide up with the candidates' email addresses, so you can reach out to them directly if you'd like to have those answered. And I'd like to thank the candidates for joining us and for their willingness to run for office. It's a lot of work and the pay is terrible. So thank you for being up to the challenge.
Thank you so much, Cindy, for moderating this evening. And thank you so much to all of the candidates that tuned in as well as the Greater Ellsworth community that tuned in. We want to thank the, of course, the Ellsworth American and Gibson Financial Solutions for sponsoring this year. And of course, our moderator Cindy Wood. Thank you, Cindy. Jason Ingles was part of our production team who works for the city of Ellsworth. Peter Leoni, who is a board member. Ben Speed, who is a videographer and former Ellsworth area resident. Heidi Stanton Drew and John Stein, who is also a board member of Heart of Ellsworth. And photo credit to Anne Marie Yesko and Patrick Druze, our model, who is in all of the images that we've used for this year's Meet the Candidates event. Also, we want to remind folks that the election information and polling wards have, we've had one change this year. And so the polls open at 7:00 a.m. and they close at 8:00 p.m. Residents of Ellsworth can register to vote at their designated ward on Election Day, but they must bring with them proof of physical residency in Ellsworth and proof of identity. So absentee ballots must be turned into the city clerk's office prior to 8 o'clock p.m. on Election Day. And I will mind you, folks, that today, City Hall is again reopened to the public. Upon entering the building, please do stop and see the receptionist and they will help you to the department and directly to be able to go to the city clerk's office to turn in your ballot. So Ward 1 is, of course, at City Hall Plaza on the second floor of the auditorium. The second Ward 2, it's temporarily relocated this year to 4 Old Mill Road in the Your Place Community Center. Ward 3 is 867 Bangor Road, Main Coast Baptist Church Gymnasium. And Ward 4 is 1 City Hall Plaza, which is on the first floor of City Council chambers. And again, just as a physical and visual reminder to you folks, each of the city council candidates who you heard from this evening, feel free to take a screenshot if you're looking to email any of these folks with follow-up questions. And one last time, we just want to say thank you to Gibson Financial Solutions and the Ellsworth American for sponsoring us and of course, to the four members who are running for our city council. And we ask each of you to remember, go and vote. Thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.